Good evening. We're at 7:00, 6:30. We have a meeting. We call a planning board meeting to order. First up for general information is Tori Chalanda.
I live on 49 River Drive. I was doing an addition on the back. Tim had mentioned last week that there was an issue about her view of like just our addition needing to come to you guys and since it's a zone limited business space. And I guess I was just told, instructed to come visit.
Okay, what do you, tell, explain to us?
I honestly don't know. He said he wanted me to come chat with you guys. There was an issue about parking. Obviously, we have a business there out front. John next door has let us borrow his field while instructions being done.
Where's 49 River Drive?
Klemoski's.
Just, yeah.
Just before Klemoski's.
It's an old Klemoski's house, right next to Ron's house.
The lawn jockey business runs out of there.
Okay.
So you see the landscaping trucks.
And they don't have room to park cars. So the cars are being parked behind the sewer pumping station.
Okay. Yeah, the cars are being parked on Klemoski's land. And they're accessing that parking area by using the driveway of the sewer pumping station. So they're crossing town property to park on other private property. There are about 15 cars, 12 to 15 cars out there.
10, yeah, probably about 10. I think it's about what we have for employee wise. So trying.
13.
Okay.
So what do you?
It's a temporary situation ultimately because of the addition with Bermuda Construction occupying my entire driveway.
What is the construction, a business addition?
No, house addition. Just a new bedroom, master bedroom off the back and a playroom for the kids on the backside. So, yeah, that's literally the expansion that we're doing. And it's just making it so it's impossible. Bermuda's probably got three or four trucks in his driveway at any one time. Plus my own vehicle. So we're moving stuff around in our shop. So we have no access to get to back. We usually store a little bit of our material, which is currently out front. So this is sort of all mitigated by once the construction's done, hopefully in a month and a half, everything goes back to being on our property. They, I asked John and Paul, asked permission, hey, here's a spot I could put vehicles just temporarily. So, yeah, but I'm happy to move it back. Whatever you guys need done, whatever the issue might be, I'm happy to resolve it.
Is there any objection from the town that you're using their driveway?
To make it sound like way, but I didn't, I haven't had a formal thing. So, but wanting to make sure.
We can't give you permission to use town property.
I'm certainly not looking for it.
You know, I would.
But there were other people in town that used town property. Nothing's happened to them, okay?
Yeah, that's exactly correct. You know, they, no, we don't go there.
So I think there are a couple of things swirling around here. One, we're glad your business is doing so well. But it, you sort of seem to have, and you're in a limited business district. So that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
One issue is always parking. In a limited business district, we'd still have the same parking requirement, which is two square feet of parking for each square foot of business floor area, including outdoor storage areas you're using. Your lot probably doesn't support that.
Yeah.
It was, it's there as what we call a pre-existing non-conforming lot. You're actually probably illegal use. But maybe we should have met to work out a special permit for business, for a business in the limited business district.
Yeah.
I think probably when you started, you were.
About half the size.
So.
And to that same point, actually, we are, literally have been all summer beginning the process of starting to find a new location in Hadley. So which is, takes some time. So that is something we were trying to do. So it's sort of even more of a, we hope to be out within nine to, no more than a year out of that space. My wife would love that. So, yeah, even though I have like my commute is 15 minutes, 15 feet across. So, yeah, I mean, it's a temporary thing and just trying to make sure that no one's stepping on their feet. We're not trying, you know, I assumed it was a right of way to that space. That's what they've always used when it was, when it was using as a cow pasture, which was recently taken down because John didn't want fences anymore. So, yeah, so that's where we're.
So what we want to sort of stay ahead of the curve on is parking. That's, that's sort of a chronic problem. And in this case, at least you're not spilling over onto, you're not parking over 47 or anything.
You're trying to avoid, yeah.
But the bylaw doesn't allow for parking on someone else's premises. So that's something to be bear in mind when you're looking for a new location.
Yeah, well, that we've, a couple places we found it. That's absolutely satisfied. It's more than enough, which is great.
Yeah. So part of it was just, you know, suddenly there were cars where there hadn't been cars neatly lined up. It looked like a used car lot, which was what, one of the first concerns was, who's doing what?
Yeah, I understand.
So that part's fine. You know, we don't have zoning police out there cruising for violations, but.
Well, the field got cut down and all of a sudden you could see the cars. It was like, they're after.
Sort of a sudden change. So I think, you know, we had this conversation with, with other entrepreneurs before. The ideal mover started out with one truck in the guy's father's driveway. And then it was two trucks, and then it was three trucks. And there were nine cars when the crew arrived in the morning. And again, we're glad you're doing well. But at some point, you're stretching, you're stretched and.
Great.
I don't think anyone's looking to ask the building inspector to enforce anything. But we're just want, want you to understand that it's, you're in a real, middle of a real gray area.
I got you. And now we're, and we're, we want, we would certainly, we want more space. So it's, we're at that point and been so, and especially this year grew rapidly. So more than our season could allow us to like make changes. So, but yeah, that's, that's our goal, our intent. And I understand the spirit of what a limited business is supposed to be. It's meant to be almost an incubator, which is pretty much what it's done for us, which has been great. So, but yeah, so that's fine. I mean, whatever you need to do, do it.
So going forward, wherever you find is a new location in Hadley, you're going to end up back talking with us.
Absolutely.
Either if you take over something that is already existing, you may be looking for a waiver of site plan approval. Or if you're in limited business, local business, I think we still need to do a special permit. But you'll be coming back to us and, and there are dimensional requirements, so.
Some tickets satisfy, yeah, I mean, I'm aware of it now.
Okay.
I started looking at it, so.
But if there is an objection from the town, whether it be the highway department, the sewer department, or the select board, or the sewer commissioners, they won't be able to drive across that road. So, and that's going to be a problem unless.
You make sure you're not blocking access to.
Yeah, I think we had an early issue where we had, I think that would have been, and we also, Bermuda puts his, that little loop there at the pump house, was putting stuff in. I think it made it difficult, which might have, you know, and I kept, we kept monitoring. That's why our staff parks cleanly and two car lengths behind the pump station, trying to make sure we honor the space as best we can, so.
You might have to ask the Kokoskis for a driveway other than for the town because that probably is the issue, I would think.
Because we're crossing town property, right?
Or using town property. And so certainly, like Jim said, we don't, we can't give you permission to use town property. Although it sounds like the board is willing to yield a little bit until you have your construction done.
Yes.
You know, you may not be able to get everything back on at that point, but.
I mean, we had the same amount when, before the construction, because the construction was delayed. The tent was to get through the middle of summer and be done. So it, everything fits, surprisingly, we fit almost eight cars plus, so 10 out front, four and two, and then the other two or three fit along the side of the driveway.
What would be a reasonable deadline?
I hope, beginning of the year. I mean, we're hoping to be done by November, you know, but we don't plan on parking there once there's even close to snow on the ground. So it's, and our staff winds down in the middle of November. So that would be, our intent would be later than the first of the year. We didn't plan on using it during the winter. We really did plan on using it that as long as we have. So we've been using probably since getting a dream. And just as well, because once crops started to get high, we couldn't see anything, so.
Look, if you have problems or things change, just come back and let us know.
Just want to make sure what we need to do for you.
Yeah, no, I think under all the circumstances, yeah, it'd be nice if you could find something. And, yeah, we're not asking the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer to enforce anything. Just wanted to know what was going on.
I'm happy to explain.
How do you spell your last name again?
Chalanda, C-H-L-A-N-D-A. Yeah, she lives next to Main Las, around, yeah. Julia Island, Greg.
Oh, okay.
Is it Tori or Tony?
Tori, T-O-R.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah. The doctor's handwriting. Don't make him doctor salary.
Chalanda?
Chalanda.
No vowel after the H, the H?
C-H-L, yeah, you know, it was a check. It was probably about the slogan.
Curious about derivations.
That's we all.
Zagradnik right here. Tell me.
Can I buy a vowel?
So, excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Attorney Albano.
Yes, so I'm here on behalf of my clients, the medical marijuana dispensary. And I think you know that they've been chosen to have one of the adult use facilities and they're going to put it in the same place. So we have to come back in front of you folks again. And I'm looking for some guidance in terms of really how best to proceed. So I guess, and you know, I haven't looked too deeply into all of the requirements here. But, but I'm thinking, we went through site plan review, you know, with the medical dispensary. And so I'm wondering to what extent that can be short circuited on, on this one. And then I think more significantly, I'm wondering if we can do this as an application for a modification or an amendment of the existing special permit rather than going to get an entirely new permit so that there aren't like two separate permits. There would be one permit that basically covers both uses.
It is a special permit process. We do need to go through the public hearing process.
Right.
Whether it's an amendment to, or an addition, or a new one, I'm not really sure that that's important, is it?
I think it does. So we don't need to do site plan approval, right say. But there was also, it was site plan approval and the adult use special permit.
Right.
So it is a different special permit, but hypothetically, if you had asked for it at the same time, we would have.
We couldn't have, it wasn't allowed, it wasn't on.
Well, if it had been, if it had been on the books and you were asking for two special permits, then we would have certainly had the hearing together. The issues are pretty much the same.
Adult use is section 30 and this one's 29 for medical.
Right, right. So I think we just need to hold the public hearing process, go through the special permit process. And I mean, at that, at that public hearing, we can decide, we'll see attorney bar, town council before, because the town meeting is in three weeks. So we can ask him, you know, can we make it one amended permit if we need to do two special permits and see what he tells us.
Okay.
You know, I don't really care which way it's done, as long as we, as long as we do the proper permit process, the actual paperwork to me is irrelevant.
Right, the application is essentially going to be the same.
Right.
I guess technically it might be.
Change a few words.
Call it, you know, an application for modification or application for.
Yeah, I mean, you go from medical to adult use and it's really.
You're going to have both, look, both uses there, right? Medical and adult use. So you're going to walk through the same door to do that?
I don't know the answer to that yet.
Is, are they different?
Are they?
Are the medical marijuana different from adult use marijuana?
I believe they are.
They are, okay.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of, I think they have to have different places in the building. And I could be wrong.
Are the products different?
Actually, now my clients can speak to this better than I can. But I believe that I read somewhere that the THC content can be greater with the medical marijuana than it is with the adult use marijuana.
Oh, okay.
I could be wrong, but I thought I saw that somewhere at one point.
I just wonder, you know, and then we can, we can discuss that at the, at the public hearing and stuff, so it's a curiosity thing.
Yeah, I was at the outreach.
Yeah, they will definitely know the answer to that. In fact, they're, they're going to review this tape and they're going to say, what Albano, you don't know this?
So, okay, yeah, I mean, you got the, you got the application, just change the, the two sets of mailing labels and, you know, we can change the title and that's it? We don't, it's like Bill says, we don't be site planned, but strictly it'd be special permit for adult use.
Great.
Who came up with the name Airloan?
I don't know.
So it's going to be.
And I got to tell you, because everything I did was what happened.
THC, okay. The Airloan Collective THC.
The concern that obviously we're going to raise is the amount of traffic that you anticipate. Are we going to need, you know, a policeman handy?
I doubt it.
Yeah, that's really dropped. That was a big deal in Northampton.
It was, it was a big deal in Amherst. I drive by the Amherst, went over and it was a rise.
Yeah.
I drive by that almost every day. There's cars coming in and out, but you seldom see more than about, I'm going to take a guess, other than the employees, I don't know how many there are, but you seldom see, I want to say eight cars in a lot?
I got to tell you, I've never seen a car, never. And I go by there a lot. And I know that in Amherst, they, when they first opened, they had the police presence out there. And then they said, well, there's no reason for it. And then when the kids came back to school, they said, we're going to do it again because the kids are now back and.
He was there one day.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there was, I want to say very low traffic.
Right.
He was there basically as a crossing guard.
Yeah, well, he was sitting at the lights and that poor person had to have been bored out of their mind, sitting there for eight hours a day, watching the skies turn colors. Because there was never an issue, not a lot of traffic. And I didn't even see him stop for traffic violation. I don't know if he could, if he was dedicated for one, I don't know how the, that works, you know. But anyways, when they, when they, school reopened, they were there for the very first day of school.
Yeah.
And that was it, they weren't back.
I saw them there that one day, but I don't know how long they were there for, how many years.
And it's, it's, well, Northampton, when they first opened, they were the only one.
Right, right.
So they were inundated. Now that you've got.
It's novelty, it was novelty.
Now that you've got a number of facilities open in the area, there's no reason to all go to one because you can do some picking and choosing which one's closest to you.
That's what they said at the outreach, outreach meeting last week was that when Northampton opened, it was one of two on the East Coast. So it was.
Oh, yeah.
And it was novelty.
You saw a lot of.
Cars from Connecticut.
Oh, you all over the place.
And I agree, I think it was a novelty item. People want to see, what is a marijuana store going to look like inside? You know, you go shopping, what are they, how they have it displayed and so on. But, you know, you go through there now and I'm not going to say that there aren't people lined up outside, but it's usually, you know, five or 10 people out the door and at the most, at the most. And I drive by there a lot.
Yeah, I mean, you've got Holyoke, I think, there's a couple opening in Holyoke. Did they open yet? They're supposed to, they have.
Yeah, and they got one up in Greenfield, I think.
Yeah, you've got Amherst, there is, there is quite a few around now.
Yeah.
To spread out, to spread the load out.
The University Drive ones have not opened yet.
No.
So who determines what price they're selling this stuff for in these stores? Is it regulated or does the, does the shop owner determine what he's going to sell a gram of marijuana for?
I don't know the answer, but to the best of my knowledge, it is the store that makes that determination.
So you're going to see some competition.
Sure.
I think somebody's played, I think there were dollar signs in everybody's eyes and I, I think. I think you can make more money selling scotch and soda than you can selling a joint over there. I really don't.
Point out.
Well, exactly you'll find out. Because there was an article, I think in the Globe, that's saying it's 70% higher than it is on the street. That's, that's a significant difference.
Well, another thing is that the stuff that you're buying in the stores is very pure, no junk in it. And it's, yeah, it's more expensive, but you know you're just getting marijuana, not a whole bunch of chemicals and additions and who knows what kind of garbage.
There's a consistency to what's in the stores because of the regulations.
You know, you buy, look at, you know, you're not getting fentanyl, methamphetamine and all the other good nasty things.
Yeah.
You know, this is just pot, anyway.
I think if you can get a reputable black market dealer, he's probably going to be selling, selling you pretty good stuff. I know a few people have been buying that stuff for years. And they're not going to the dispensary, they're going to their old dealer.
But anyways, that's not our.
The store. So, yeah, I guess it does sound like we're kind of leaning towards bringing it in as a request to modify the prior special permit by adding a second special permit.
Yeah.
Because the prior one will remain in effect.
Yeah.
And with, the prior one did have a specific clause in it saying this is not adult use because we do have concerns about the, the site for adult use.
Was it only good for two, two years?
Three years.
Three years.
Well, it was, it was, special permits have been modified by the state, whatever it is. And we changed our bylaw, you've got three years to the date of approval to start construction, not open the store.
Right.
And they has clearly started construction, in fact, they completed construction.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, it's not one that lapses after three years. It is, only lapses if it is not executed within three years.
Right.
Has the medical opened yet or will they be opening pretty soon?
It has not opened yet. And my understanding is that there's some slowdown in, in Boston. I mean, I understand they have all of their permits and everything, but I don't know if it, if it might be like an inspection by the state to come out here. And I mean, you know how that goes. It's like, they got three stores in the, in the state to inspect and they can't get them on the schedule, you know?
Okay. All right.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay.
I apologize for being tardy. I was being a good.
We're docking you a whole, years pay for that.
I was being a good Samaritan and helping my office mate jumpstart a car, so.
Okay. Discuss and act on acceptance of Megan's Way's first other business today. I talked to David Nixon, who called me when, with Chris Okafor. They have not received Asbilde plans of Megan's Way yet.
There, I was, there was a meeting of this project coordinating group this afternoon. And Chris was there and David was there. The, the working theory is that Tom Quinnland said flat out that he had dropped off copies of the Asbilde at DPW. There's no reason to doubt him. The working theory at the moment is he walked up to the building, handed the plans to someone and they never got to Chris.
Okay.
There may be some other concerns about the, the project. So I put together a little package of stuff, passed one of those down. So the first sheet is from a book that is on the state website. It's Streets and Ways for Surveyors. But this is towards acceptance of public ways. So when something is offered to the town, most of the work is on the select board's part. They have to, they have to, actually have to schedule a public hearing. And they have to go out and do a site visit. They went through this with Gooseberry and with Holly.
Okay.
So one thing they have to do is refer to us for our recommendation. And that's why, that's why it's on, it's up for now.
Okay.
So the second thing in the package is just a plan subdivision. And the third is a copy of the decision that I wrote up back in 2014.
Okay.
And so one question is whether, one requirement is that provide the Asbilde to the highway department and get the written confirmation from the highway department prior to the release of any performance security. I guess we can consider that as part of our recommendation on whether the way should be accepted. So we, so one, we have no, no written acceptance from DPW. So there are two things I want to mention here. This is the last subdivision that was approved under our old rules.
Okay.
And it also is before DPW. So some of the terminology is a little different now.
Yep.
The second thing, we've got performance security. The second thing was that the professional engineer survey was to sort of, was to certify that it included all road construction utilities and other improvements. I don't happen to remember.
I don't remember getting that either.
Well, we got the plan. Quinnland dropped off the plan, but I don't know whether it had the certification.
Got to look in the file. I believe we did get something from somebody that says it was built to plan.
The critical thing is the, certainly the Asbilde plan and the water shut offs. But the town has, rather than the peer review engineer examining the water shut offs, the town wanted that responsibility.
Yeah, we wanted a qualified independent water system licensee, full time onsite. Yes. Oh, let's see, that was condition two was the DPW and the certification of completion. We also asked for written easements. That's on page three, item 11.
I don't know that we have that. That's this line that runs across the property here, I'm assuming?
Yes, I think so. I can blow it up to a larger scale, but.
What's not labeled on this drawing, what that is?
Drainage easement.
Well, it's also this shaded area here.
Oh, okay.
That's listed as drainage easement.
Okay.
And those shaded areas in front.
Okay, yeah.
That must just be an old field road that runs through there.
That's what it is.
Okay.
So.
So in the future, will these drainage structures have to be attractive?
That's not what the subdivision regulation said.
The leach and catch spaces, I've heard of no complaints.
Let's see, what else? So, okay, so we want to check, oh, yeah, that's certificate of completion. We want to check that we have that. Completion of all required subdivision improvements will be certified by a licensed engineer. And I don't, I think that's about it on our end. So all that we can tell the select board really is that we have no written, no written recommendation from DPW. we have no written, no written recommendation from DPW and.
Drainage easements.
Drain easements. I'm not sure if they submitted a legal description of the way when they filed, I haven't seen one in the warrant.
I believe they, they submitted one last year when they tried to do it the first time.
Okay. Okay, so I'll make a motion to reply to the select board that we have no written DPW opinion and we do not have the written easements. And then.
Do we have to follow up, asking for the easements for the town or does, or does DPW ask for them?
Don't know.
Quinlan probably forgot about it.
We can, so to reply to the site board that we can't recommend at this time.
See, the difference back then, if the road was put into satisfactory, as according to our, you know, subdivision regulations, we had to release all the lots. Now, we can hold one lot and we say, look, nothing's gonna happen to release that last lot until you get this, this, this and this. And then we don't have to chase things down. So there's a little bit more leverage.
But here we're sort of outside the subdivision regulations because we're now in the, we're now in the loop that the select board is in. They're a different statute. So we're just making a, they've asked us for our opinion and our opinion is we don't.
Can't recommend.
We can't recommend at this time.
You have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes by. Okay, next one is the Nibala APR.
Didn't.
I printed out my copy.
Okay.
And.
I was having a little trouble following the, the question was that they're putting some, part of the property is going into APR. It doesn't seem to have enough frontage to support a building lot. But I don't see that's a problem with the property going into APR.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to figure this out, I had a little bit of trouble reading this. And this is from the state, Donald Hall, Ronald Hall. I am contact, okay, I'm contacting you for assistance with directing me to the appropriate persons regarding the questions that have resulted from the Nibala APR survey on E Street. Attached is a draft survey of the property that the department is looking to protect. Surveyor has determined the lot, the split frontage on the property to total 147.4 feet for the land, which we placed in the APR lot two, while excluding out lot one for the dwelling. Our understanding of our zone, of the zoning dimensional requirements for this location in town have the Nibala parcel on the Acreford district and require a minimal frontage of 200 feet. We will be seeking planning board approval to have this parcel approved as its own standalone APR for the circumstances of any future third party transfer under the restriction. The question being asked, is there an instrument for which the planning board approval can be given for this APR parcel, understanding the total split frontage is less than the minimum zoning minimum? And we got a picture of it. And this is E Street. And I can't determine too well from here where they're talking because its print is so small.
It's probably over here.
Well, this is.
You see a little, little drainage ditch coming through there, a little stream.
Well, the Nibala's got frontage over here, pre-existing.
I think, yeah, the idea was that this was once, this is the exclusion they want to put in.
Right.
Which is to take the house out of the APR. So once you take 200 feet of frontage for the house, you, basically you don't, they're saying you don't have 400 feet of frontage from the young man's club.
No, but you have 140, okay, so you take the house out with 200 feet, but you have 147 feet, which is more than enough for subdivision road.
Yeah.
You only need 50 feet for subdivision road, so they have more than adequate frontage for subdivision.
Yeah, so they're, they're not asking the right question.
They're not asking, they're, they're, they're not asking the right question. Yes, you could easily put a subdivision here and take out the land for the, for the house.
Sure.
But that has already been determined on the price. And it's, it's gonna be APR, so there are no subdivisions could ever be proposed.
Yeah, but the thing is, that means, what Jim's saying is we wouldn't object to a lot being cut off with.
You have 200 feet for the house. Lot, lot, the lot, the, the house lot, right here, that's 200 feet.
Yeah.
That's the house. They have 200 feet cut out of the property.
Okay.
So the house is a legal building lot.
Correct.
You have 147 feet left over. You have enough to put a subdivision road in and put a subdivision back here on all of this property.
And the APR only requires 25 feet as a, more than a right of way.
If you're looking for, if you're looking for an A and R lot, no, it doesn't qualify for an A and R lot. But with 147 feet of frontage and 37 acres.
Can you read, read the question again, Jim, what they're asking? It doesn't make.
They're asking the wrong question. They're asking the wrong question. Attached is a draft survey of the property that the department is looking to protect. The survey has determined the split frontage on a property to total 147.4 feet for the land, which we placed in an APR lot, lot number two, while excluding, excluding out lot one for the dwelling. Our understanding of the zoning dimensional requirement for this location in town have the Nibala parcel in the Acreford district and required minimum frontage is 200 feet. We will be seeking planning board approval to have this parcel approved as its own standalone APR lot for the circumstances of any future third party transfer. So the house has 200 feet, legal lot. You have 147.4 feet left over and 70, no, I'm sorry, 37 acres. So you've got more than adequate frontage for a subdivision, anything else.
I could see if this came up previous to that, that would be part of the negotiation if I were the owner, that I have the ability to put a subdivision in or a building lot there, but that has already been determined.
We, we don't have to worry about that.
That's correct.
We just have to worry about, are these two legal lots? That is a legal house lot, building lot where the house is. And that is a legal lot with 147 foot frontage to put in a subdivision. That's what it comes down to.
They're not asking about a subdivision.
We don't need to worry.
We, we would sign an A and R, we would sign that A and R.
We would sign that A and R plan, that's what it comes down to.
Yes.
Because you could certainly put a road in, put a subdivision, whether or not you want to is another story. Obviously they don't want to, which you certainly could, you've got 37 acres to put a road in and build. And you're not crossing any wetlands here, that's way over here.
And there will be an endorsement that.
Actually, you are crossing the ditch, you are crossing a ditch there. But that's, that's a ditch. And you put a little bridge over it, yes.
We just need not a building lot endorsement on that parcel, like that's.
So do we respond to this or what do we do?
I'll, I think it came to me indirectly.
Yeah, it did.
Ron Hall wrote to, sure. Ron Hall wrote to David Nixon, who wrote to me, so.
And so who signed that letter?
Ronald Hall.
Which is the Mass, State of Mass.
He is at Mass Department of Agricultural Resources. I am not sure what, his name comes up all the time. I guess he is the replacement for Rich Hubbard as sort of the guru of the APR program.
Ron Paul P A U L?
Ronald Hall.
Paul, H A L L.
Hall.
Hall. The old, the old announcer on WHMP.
Ron Abbott Port Hall.
I was gonna say if it was Paul, it's been shortened from something.
Okay, okay. All right. Planning board procedures. So there was a meeting of this projects coordination group today. And there is, apparently there's been a recurrence of people coming to see us and then going out and doing things that the planning board approved without regard to whether the, anybody else has a voice in this. So apparently one example is the.
Farm stand at Rocky Hill.
Well, Farm Stand at Rocky Hill, yes, there's some, there apparently are a lot of compliance issues there and questions about whether it needs to be sprinklered, depending on what they want to do there.
Okay.
A lot of things that were never within our purview to say that, yeah, we think you do qualify for the zoning exemption. Another example given was the laundromat that went in. Apparently they did some interior work there without bothering to apply for wiring permits or plumbing permits. They moving their machines in. Tim and the fire chief said they were unaware that there was a business, that there was even a business there until they went to the building to check out some concerns they had about the bagel place. So apparently among other things, there are some different sprinkler requirements for facilities like laundromats, especially after the disaster with the laundromat fire.
By stands.
By stands. And another one was, I think it was the, oh, some of the sprinklers that were put into these multi-year use buildings that we had previously approved have to be modified based on the use of the space. I think the dentists may require a higher level of sprinklering than say the place that does nails. So, Tim was very much asking, can we get some protocol in place to say, if someone comes in to see us, I want a waiver of site plan approval, and we refer them to Tim and ask them to come back in two weeks after they've talked to Tim. I was taken to position that if there is no zoning issue, if we don't see any zoning issue when someone comes in for a waiver, we just as soon clear it off our docket and not drag it out. Not, we don't need to see people twice to tell them we, we still don't see a zoning issue. But Tim was very concerned that people seemed to think that we are the super board that does everything.
Yeah.
So what I did hear was most of what is on this page is actually what, is actually found in the boilerplate of our site plan approval by law. And the point I wanted to make mainly is the one in bold that when we waive site plan approval, that's all we're doing. We're not giving you a green light to open a business. We're just saying that we don't see any need for further zoning review. But then some standard conditions that if you say you're not doing exterior alterations, don't do exterior alterations without telling us. Don't move in trailers and you have to talk to these other boards.
So you're saying that every time we give a waiver, we give them this piece of.
Yes.
That sounds like a good idea.
Excellent idea, and I think we ought to not only give them the piece of paper, but.
I made, made and see if we can post this to our webpage as.
Probably want to attach it to a decision.
Well, we could do is, we could, we could have, this is an idea. We give them the waiver, we give them a copy, they sign this copy and we attach it to our little simple waiver that they've received it.
Mm-hmm.
Just to cover the bases.
Yes, yeah.
Okay?
Okay, I can throw in a, I can tweak it.
Yeah, put a little signature place on the bottom someplace and a date.
We're just saying that they acknowledge having received, so you don't have to read it, you don't have to like it.
Acknowledge receipt.
Just, you, we've had to do this, okay?
Good idea.
So I did circulate it around to that, to the group and they got generally positive feedback, so.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. I did not realize how much of a problem it seemed to be.
Yeah, I, I was, I'm surprised, well, we won't go there, whatever.
So I made extra copies, at this point, maybe you just hold on to them with.
Okay.
With, you know, put them to those, those speed memos you have to Tim, so that we won't forget to pass one out.
So basically you're gonna add a signature.
I'll add a signature line, you know, I, I made 20 or 15 copies, so I think we'll just.
We can just hem signs for now, yeah, that's good. And I'll, when I hem sign it, I'll put a, put a little line on there, acknowledge receipt.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Something like that.
Date.
See, the bureau is being painted on the.
Painted?
Bean property.
I thought it was gonna be a decal. They're painting it?
Well, they're putting it up.
Okay, okay, because they said they were going to.
It looks pretty nice.
It's gonna be vinyl, yeah.
Yeah, a vinyl, big vinyl, that's a big vinyl sign.
Yeah, it was like 16, no, 30 something feet, yeah.
Oh, it's huge, yeah.
You would think that would oil can or ripple or, I guess they're gonna hear it.
I mean, you look at, for example, look at McDonald's trailer when they drive down the road. Those are all vinyl decals on the side of McDonald's trailer, little big, you know, with a, with a picture of the chicken and the eggs and all the different sandwiches. Those are all vinyl decals.
On the side of those trucks, okay.
So.
It's like wallpaper.
Anything to add to next week's agenda beyond what's there already?
Public hearings, no. We got two, two zone articles, the general bylaw. I'm still waiting to hear back from Joel on the exact wording of amending the section 24. I've called him twice, left messages, talked to him, I've left him emails. I put a word in there, kind of a phrase for now. He'll probably get back to us a couple of days before the town meeting to amend it, but it's only, it's only a sentence, so it can be easily amended on town meeting, we have to, no word about that, okay?
Can you refresh my memory and what the, what the trigger was for the senior housing overlay expansion?
The, there was a petition article to extend the senior housing overlay to a parcel on the other side of the bike path to parcels.
I see that there is.
It basically goes almost, you know, tween, it's from River Drive to the back end of the old supply building where the water tower is.
Yeah.
It's on the south, behind the houses on the south side of Newton Lane.
Okay.
It's a five or six acre parcel.
And that was to enable someone.
Senior housing, yeah, when somebody wants to put senior housing there.
The owner is petitioning on the, Barry Roberts and Tom Reedy, his lawyer, were at the select board meeting last week to speak to that. They, what they said was that they, they missed the filing deadline. He said, he talked to someone on the planning board about what the filing deadline was, when the warrant was gonna close, but apparently it closed earlier. He didn't say who he spoke to, I don't recall if I spoke to him or, anyway.
I spoke to, I spoke to Tom Reedy about it, but I said, you need to get, you, you, you need to get the request in. He probably didn't hear that part of it.
Yeah.
I said, you can hold off on getting us the actual wording and make a decision, but you need to get a request in by September 10th, I think it was.
So the select board was reopening the warrant anyway to add a couple of other things. And they took the position that if this had been submitted timely, it would have been on, so they weren't going to be harsh about it. There were some of the neighbors from, this was on about, oh, for a. There were some of the neighbors from, this was on about, oh, for, uh, annual town meeting and was withdrawn. Uh, there was going to be a discussion with the neighbors about whether they were willing to buy, basically enlarge their backyards by buying up the land, and that, those negotiations apparently fell through. There will be, um, I anticipate the, the neighbors will be attending in force for the public hearing. I did speak with one of the neighbors and tried to make it, I think I got it across, that this is going to, our public hearing will not keep this from going to town meeting. Uh, our recommendation is advisory to town meeting, it's on the warrant by petition, it will be, uh, it will get to town meeting floor. But they're free to come and, um, talk about it as much as they want.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, I also...
So, after this, after that hearing, we would make our recommendation, which would be written into the warrant, either we are for it or against it?
No, 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 it will not be written into the warrant.
Oh, okay.
It'll just be, we'll have the public hearing, we will vote to make a recommendation at the end of that particular part of the public hearing, either yea or nay, we cannot make a decision. We, normally, you back up a little bit, the planning board has three options. Recommend in favor, recommend against, or if the public hearing is more than 21 days before the town meeting, they can make no recommendation. Neutral. This public hearing is being held a week and a couple of days before the public hearing, so we have to make a recommendation either yea or nay. And we simply, it's a verbal recommendation, we make the vote, we make it here, it's a simple majority, and on town meeting floor, they'll introduce the article, make the motion second, very first comment is I make, or Bill makes, whoever's there at the time, depending, this is the planning board recommendation, and then discussion ensues.
Now, where we get a veto is if it is turned down, same proposal can't come back for two years unless we affirmatively recommend that it be brought back.
Yeah.
We did that once, someone had attacked a, uh, there were a lot of, it turned out to be very contentious zoning issues, and some poor guy wanted to expand, wanted to rezone his one parcel of land, and, um, everything got voted down that year. So, we did, uh, for the fall town meeting, recommend that he be brought back and be allowed to make his case without all of the other staff. He, he came back, it didn't go through, and, anyway, but at least he had a fair chance to do it and not get swamped by us. But, uh, this parcel can only come, if this parcel doesn't pass this time, it can't come back for two years without our explicit approval. I also made a point of, you may gather the select board was discussing the warrant. So, I made a point, they had tagged the Megan's Way and acceptance and the rezoning, this rezoning proposal as planning board will present. And I tried, I, I said that, no, we're not going to present, we are, uh, these are by petition, it has to be read that way, and when you stand up and look for someone to speak to this, you're looking to the petitioner, not to the planning board.
We'll make the recommendation on our part, but that's it.
We'll do our statutory obligation, but we are not, uh, we are not presenting these. And one other thing, it turns out it's, uh...
Well, we can speak as citizens.
You can speak as citizens, yes, yes, but we're just, we're not taking any official responsibility for this. Uh, I do want to point out one other thing, I, that the, um, the two articles, it doesn't directly involve us, but speaking as citizens, the two articles on removing Zoturka Park from 93, from, uh, Article 90, from constitutional protection and subs, I'm sorry, removing North Hadley Ball Field from constitutional open space protection and substituting Zoturka Park for that, uh, have been placed back on the warrant without, without any changes from the, uh, those were voted down at the annual town meeting. Uh, I gathered that maybe the historical commission is asked to have them put back on. At least someone from the historical commission was here to speak in favor of having them on. But I asked David Nixon if there were any changes, he said, no, I cut and pasted.
Zoturka is the park at the corner of Huntington and Breckenridge?
Correct, yes. So, we'll, we'll get to it.
Who requested it be brought back before town meeting, in the select board?
Well, they didn't object, uh, there's someone from the historical commission was here saying that they, they'd been talking to people who felt confused by it all and would have voted differently had they not been confused. So, um, David, Phil made a comment about, we have an unfortunate habit of, um, bringing back, revoting things that didn't come out the way we liked them. So, um, so we'll see how that plays out.
Okay. I have nothing else.
I have nothing else.
Anybody else have anything?
I have some questions. Oh, I, I think we talked about that, that was, uh... Oh, I, I guess I just wanted to acknowledge that we had received a couple of emails from Susan Del Molino. I don't know, she was looking for us to weigh in on those or...
No, that's about marijuana, open grow.
Right.
And...
And one was about the...
That, that was him, yeah.
Yeah, and one was about the number of people in a, and so she shared some opinions.
Yeah, they're, they're also, they're putting us in cam because I guess a couple of fields have been both been getting part, why the stally hemp, I have no idea. But there's cameras and they caught some people, I saw that in the news, and they're doing some stuff on there.
Yeah, she had written about the smell and, and, and her opinion.
And her opinion, and it, if you, somebody had some cut this morning, fresh cut, it smells now, it's a lot different than what was brought in before.
So, it's a seasonal.
Yeah, but, but it doesn't smell like a skunk.
No.
I would, you, you go, go to the Big Y gas station and get gas over here at Big Y, the whole field behind a Big Y gas station on a dead quiet day is all hemp.
Or the Methodist church.
Okay, and you can just stand there and get gas and walk over to the field and smell it, and it's got a different odor. It doesn't smell like a skunk, it doesn't smell like tobacco, it doesn't smell like tea, it's different, but it's not like, oh my gosh, if that was around me, I couldn't stake it.
Yeah.
It's just, it's got an odor, you know, name a crop that doesn't have an odor. So...
Yeah, that was how I read her, she basically said, if it smelled like skunk, it was a two-day-old skunk, she said it was, it was, it was different, as you said.
So, um, um, for the time being, you know, we're, we've got a couple of questions for, for Attorney Bard, but I mean, there was a recent land court decision where they said that marijuana was an agricultural crop, and there, there are some people that are, on the opinion, excuse me, that that means that it's no longer agriculturally exempt, and that is not the case.
We don't believe that.
We don't believe that's the case, and we're going to verify that with Attorney Bard, and, you know, I'm still not opposed to letting somebody, you know, there's a problem with open growing in that how do you, and it's a farmer's issue, that's not a, it's not a growing issue, in that you don't want marijuana to go to seed, you want to keep it as a bud, that's where the THC is, if it goes to bud, if it goes to seed, it's not exactly a very useful crop, and that's only the female plant. So, how do you prevent cross pollination if it's open grow, because somebody a few miles away, I'm assuming, could cross pollinate your crop? I don't know that.
Could be pollinated and not go to seed, you're going to pick it quickly, that's all you're going to do, you're going to harvest it.
Maybe that's what the people were doing at night.
Well, that's hemp, hemp has, hemp has virtually no THC, anyways.
The only other thing I had a question about was there's a, I think we're, there's going to be a bylaw change voted on for Farm Stand, was that the thing we talked about, about the 25% or...
There's no...
Is that going to be on the warrant?
No.
No.
There's nothing on a by, bylaw about the 25% that I know of.
Yeah, I just...
Unless...
No, nothing we could put on a, a town warrant would affect the zoning act. The exemption is in Chapter 48, Section 3, which are topics that zoning may not regulate, yes, so we may not.
We can't do, we can't change that.
I know there has, there have been some discussions going on between the building inspector and the proprietor of the Farm Stand that just reopened, uh, Rocky Hill Road, but I don't believe I saw anything on the warrant about that.
Okay.
Is that it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is history, thank you, and thank you, John.